How long, Lois? It is so good to see all of you. So, look, I gotta start out in a pretty hard place. And that is, our country is under assault right now. Assault from Putin. Donald Trump ran for office promising on day one to lower costs for American families. He repeated that over and over and over. We had ads on it, talked about it at every rally. Said that one thing he could promise, on day one, he would lower costs for American families. After he got elected, very first interview he gave, he said that was why he won. Because he made that promise to lower costs for American families. Are your costs any lower?
No.
No. In fact, look at what Donald Trump has been doing since he's been sworn in. Here we are, going into the third month. Oh, Lord. Going into the third month, and what is he doing? He's trying to end entire agencies in government. We've got the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau. Woo-hoo! The cut on the beef, so you don't get cheated on your credit card, on your mortgage, on your car loan. Just trying to sweep that completely off the books. Elon Musk trying to kill you. Let's see that, people. Just take them out, take them out. Department of Education, there for our little children, there for people trying to get a college diploma, there to make sure that a good public education is available for all of our kids. And they're trying to take it out. And as co-president Musk comes through with his chainsaw, he's getting rid of the fact that we don't need in government. You know, like the nuclear scientists that take care of fissionable material. Getting rid of air traffic controllers who keep us safe while we're on airplanes. Getting rid of the people who do the testing to make sure that we can drink the water and breathe the air. Getting rid of the people who inspect food that comes from foreign countries to make sure that we can safely eat it. That's what he thinks is cutting waste, fraud, and abuse. And understand, they don't stop there. They also are out trying to cut off our future. End the money that goes into medical research, into scientific research, in the money that goes into higher education, in the money that goes into building the very foundations of our future. That's what they're trying to do. And they're throwing up, they're throwing up tons of it every minute. People say to me, "I can't keep up. I can't keep up with the headlines. There's too much going on every day." Understand this, that is exactly the plan. That is the plan. Because their hope is, if you feel overwhelmed, if you can't keep up with every piece of it, that you will simply cover up your head, give up, and let them do whatever they want. Well, I have to say to them, "Not on my watch." So if you look at the list of things they've done, and it may feel random to you. It's like, "What? And they're doing what? I didn't even know that thing existed. And they did what?" There's a whole lot of that going on. But again, that's the hope. When you've got a really ugly plan that nobody much likes, Democrats don't like it, independents don't like it, and the majority of Republicans don't like it, you gotta find a way to run it through with nobody seeing it until it's too late. So what are they really doing with all those cuts? What is that chainsaw really about? Why shut down these departments? Why take down money that we invested in pediatric cancer research? I'll tell you exactly what it's for. What the Republicans in Congress, and Elon Musk, and Donald Trump are trying to do is they want to have a $4.7 trillion giveaway to a handful of billionaires and billionaire corporations paid for on the backs of seniors, veterans, public workers, little kids. And we are here to say no to them. So this is really important. The next time you're feeling a little overwhelmed, the next time you're thinking, "I'm not sure I'm following this next piece", stop and say to yourself, "Oh, wait. That is the plan. That is the plan. And we are the people who are fighting back." So here's why I'm here tonight. I want to tell you three things I'm doing. And you know I come with an ask. I'm gonna ask you to do three things. And then we're gonna do some questions. I want to hear from you. I want to talk about other things going on. So what are we doing? What am I trying to do? I'll tell you what I'm doing. I'm doubling down on the Constitution of the United States. I'm putting my chips on the table. And let's just remember, constitutional law 101, three parts to government. It is the job of Congress to write the laws and enact the laws. That's our job. It is the job of the administration to administer those laws, to carry them out faithfully. And it is the job of the courts to go after the administration and hold them accountable if they fail to follow the law. So, part one, for me right now, for a whole lot of folks, is we're taking Donald Trump and Elon Musk to court. Not once, not twice. We are in over 100 lawsuits now. And they're not through. Because understand this, what Donald Trump and Elon Musk are doing is illegal. They are violating the law. We just gotta say it right now, right now. For any of you who run into some of your buddies who may have voted for Donald Trump because they thought he was gonna lower prices, they say, "Well, but he got elected." Yeah, he got elected. And Republicans control the House and the Senate. If they want to change the law, the Constitution tells us how to do it. You're starting Congress, you write new laws, then the administration can administer those laws. But no unelected guy with a chainsaw gets to come out here and shut down agencies and fire people. So that's part one. We are in court. And the early decisions, look, they're not all perfect. Not every case is gonna line up the right way. But it's looking hopeful. The courts are doing what they should be doing. They're calling people out who are not following the law. And latest sign is it's moving all the way to Elon Musk by name. All right, part two, job in Congress. Go back to what I was talking about earlier. All the noise, all the sand in the gears, all the terrible things they're trying to do. Underlying all of that is trying to hand over our government to the billionaires, to a handful of billionaires and billionaire corporations. This is gonna be the fight over taxes. And that may sound boring, it is not. It is fundamentally who this government works for. Donald Trump, Elon Musk, a handful of billionaires who stood up there on the podium when Trump was sworn in. They say that the United States people, the people of this country, should give them $4.7 trillion in giveaways and make everyone else pay for it. Because that is their vision of America. An America that works even better for the billionaires and even worse for everyone else. I am a Democrat, and what it means to be a Democrat is we believe that every one of those guys needs to pay their fair share. So this fight is the big fight. And this is the fight in front of us. This is the one coming up right away. So that's gonna be the second thing. We're gonna be in this fight everywhere we possibly can. Part three is I'm doing everything I can, along with others, to help raise a movement. Ultimately... Ultimately, we've got the courts, we've got Congress, but real power in this nation is the American people. Real power is here, right here, in all Massachusetts. Real power are the people who continue to pay attention. The people who continue to reach out, the people who continue to make their voices heard. That's why so much of this fight is trying to get people just to give up. Trying to overwhelm them, so they'll just cover up their heads. Trying to say it's all too complicated. Trying to do it all with the emojis and let's do this, make fun of people. Let's try to take them down. Because they want you to give up. Because you are the true source of power. So last week, I was not here in Massachusetts. I was in Texas. Bernie's in Iowa. That was 10 miles. We got a bunch of people out. Wisconsin, that's exactly right. Yeah! But that's the idea. We gotta raise it, we gotta raise it together. So those are the three things that I'm working on, trying to get all of my friends in the Senate, friends everywhere, to work on. But I'm here to ask you to be part of this as well. And here are my three asks from you. The first one is tell the stories. We build a grassroots movement, one blade of grass at a time. And you can say, "Cut federal employees", and it may sound like cutting waste, fraud, and abuse. But when you talk about that you have a child in a pediatric cancer trial that is supported by federal dollars, and taking those federal dollars away can threaten that child's life, that's a story that everybody else in America needs to hear. When you're ready to talk about your neighbor down the street who is trying hard to be able to live independently, serious accident, has gotta have some home health care, and that Elon Musk, the richest man on this planet, thinks that the way we save money is we tell that person, "You don't get a home health aid. You have to move into a nursing home. That's all that's gonna be available for you." And then turns around and says to people who are in nursing homes, "There's not gonna be enough support for you." I don't know what the plan is there. We're just gonna set people out on the corners. Tell those stories. Tell them real, tell them from your family, tell them from your neighbors, tell them from your cousins. But tell those stories. That's number one. It is the best possible way to meet people where they are and get them to understand the importance of this fight. Second part, do not underestimate the power of organization. Power of organization. You're also forgot. Any other words that we've got here? How about unions? We got anybody who wants to join? I have to just tell you, you know about the power of organization, right? Organization, but I mean this in every way you can magnify your voice. You've got a Facebook group, that's organization. You've got a bunch of friends you went to school with 22 years ago, and you still keep in touch. That's organization. And if some of them don't live in Massachusetts, woo, that's even better, organization. Because this is how we keep moving these stories out. We're gonna push these stories out the door. And organizing keeps us going. So that's the second part. One voice is loud, but two voices are more than twice as loud. So lots of organization. Third point, take care of yourself. And then just be self-care, be self-care for each other. So there's a reason on the airplane that they always do the little thing about, "Adjust your own mask before trying to help anyone else." You gotta keep breathing oxygen. You gotta stay in this fight. And there are a lot of ways that we can do this. Each of us will find our own. I have a very large golden retriever. It might be a little too large. Bruce, however, always just describes him as "He's large boned." He does like spaghetti, though. Padding a golden retriever is part of how. I do a little self-care in this. And, oh, yes. And I want to say this for all of you. It also fits with the point about telling stories and organization. If you've got more people in the fight with you, you've got more people to keep you going when you're kinda in the down part of this, to remind you of the good parts. We have a rule in our office. And that is when anything good happens, and I get it, come few and far between sometimes, but when something good happens, when we get a good court decision that comes down, when we see an HHC where somebody stands up and says, "Well, I'm just gonna have to fire me then because I'm not leaving without you." We pass that around, and we all stop and feel good about it for a minute, reminding each other that we are in this fight together. So, three things I'm working on, three things I'm asking you to work on. Because now we get down to the bottom part of this. And that is, this is hard. I never thought our nation would face something like this. An unelected billionaire with a chainsaw is making decisions to get rid of thousands of people that we count on every day to keep this country going? I never thought I would be at a time when a president of the United States would be saying, "Yeah, recession, it worked out fine." I never thought I would be in a place where the Republicans in Congress would be so spineless. But despite all of that, despite what we are up against, despite it all, I am fundamentally optimistic. And I am optimistic for this reason. I know what it means to fight a righteous fight. This is a righteous fight, and we are in this together. There is no one I would bother by the outside. There are the good people of rural Massachusetts, of all of Massachusetts, and of the United States of America. Isn't that all wonderful? Thank you. Come back. Okay. Okay, it's Q and A. Q and A. Q and A. So I'm gonna pick four tickets. And if, when I call your number, you can make your way to the microphone. Now or maybe we'll just give out prizes. We give away Teslas. First one. I fear they're cheap. How about just the last number, 6683? 936683, that's the first one. Do we have a winner? Okay, there's a microphone up there, yes. The next one is 936551. All right, come on down. We have a microphone right there, yes. And the third one is 936816. 816? 816. 816? 816, do we have 816? Okay, come on down. All right. Make your way to the microphone. And 936751. 751. We got 751? Okay, let's start with these and see if we can do another round. 75, do we got 751? Right there, 751, okay. Okay. Good. All right, so... How about we go ahead and start with number two while we're waiting for number one to make his way down? We'll go away.
Hi, so my name is Matt Myers. I work for an organization called The Riverbend, formerly Lowell House. We're a nonprofit that does substance use sort of... ...substance use sort of treatment, mental health treatment throughout Merrimack Valley. So obviously, with the talked about potential cuts to Medicaid, we see a lot of concern amongst a lot of our clientele who are low or no income, who are servicing. What's being done in Congress to really help focus on substance use and mental health treatment for those who really get it?
So thank you, first of all, for your work. It is really important work. There's probably nobody in here whose family hasn't been touched by opioids and other kinds of substances that have truly destroyed so many in our communities. And I know it's a hard fight, Matt. And I'm grateful for all you've done. I also want to say that this is one of those things about why we have government. We don't know for sure who's gonna get hit by a bus. We don't know for sure whose granny is gonna outlive her retirement. And we don't know for sure who's gonna get caught in a web that turns their life upside down. But what we do know is that we all pitch in some nickels as we go along, so that if it hits your family, or it hits your family, the rest of us are there to try to help prop it up. That's what Medicaid is. It's nothing fancier than that. It's like a giant insurance policy for all of us. For the little baby that's born with severe problems that is gonna need a lot of help those first few years of life. For the person who's trying to make it home, for the person who's trying to get their life back on track. So here's where we are. We're there, we get it. We understand that they're gonna try to cut it. They're gonna try to say they're not cutting it. They're gonna do every, you know, "My hands, you know, will never leave, my fingers will never lick my hands", or whatever they say. They want Trump to claim they're not. We are gonna stay after them to show what those cuts mean, person by person. And in effect, do something we have not done for decades. And that is defend our government. Defend what we do together. And defend our medical program. So I'm all in. Substance use is gonna be a big part of it. But so are the other parts. Because we are not gonna fight each other for these dollars. We are not gonna find ourselves in a place where it's, "Well, you can either have money for substance abuse or for old people in nursing homes." No. The answer is, we are the richest nation on earth, the richest man on earth, who pays for taxes. And we're gonna get everybody's money today. I'm looking in delight.
Good evening, Senator, thank you. I wanted to follow up on your point about doubling down on the Constitution.
Tell me your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Christopher Jenkins, right here in Lowell.
Okay.
I just want to follow up on your point about doubling down on the Constitution, which I very much appreciate. And I realize this is definitely more easily said than done. But I was wondering if there were any discussions about amending, to clarify, constitutional powers and rules? Because right now, I think the imbalance is pretty evident among the branches' inability or unwillingness. I mean, the pardon power is pretty much absolute. Trump is taking basically a "how many divisions does the court have" attitude. So is there any discussion to at least start getting people thinking about constitutional modifications to weigh in this kind of behavior?
So, you know, thank you. We don't have enough to do. That was said with love. Sort of. But it is the case that the 1-2 punch of... the 1-3 punch, is that a thing? Of Donald Trump, Elon Musk, and spineless Republicans who are willing just to give away the power of Congress are causing us to have to look at parts of the Constitution in ways we had never looked at them before. So I definitely don't want to overpromise here, but there are conversations that are starting because we understand threats. We have lived throughout certainly our lives always thinking, "Not here. It can't happen here. Our Constitution, right, keeps this bold." And now we are learning better. So thank you for the reminder. And you also give me one more reason to raise this at lunch with my colleagues. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Wally Smith. I live here in Lowell, Mass. I'm a lifelong Democrat. I like it both. Number one, I have no hesitation. Thank you for all that you do and what you have done. But I'm here now. Second, I have kind of a question. I do stay active on social media. Even that platform that I don't pay for, that I hate, just so I can get my voice out there for the people I hate. Too strong, a little bit, too strong, but anyway. During 2024, I was encouraged to read Project 2025. And I tweeted this out to the Democratic leadership. I did. Kamala was right. Because everything she said that they were gonna do is in that project. And for those of us paying attention, they're checking it off one by one. The author just said how surprised he is, how well it's going. My question for our leadership. I was in marketing. I volunteered. Would be happy to help you develop a strategy. Because I'm concerned that here we arrive telling everybody this is what's coming, but yet we show up like we never read it. And we didn't do a strategy. But yes, it's more than that. But I'd love to see that get together. I'd be willing to volunteer my time. I believe in outside-in strategies where we, the customer, get input into the strategy. And then, you know, help the organization move ahead. So thank you. But again, I don't think you can really answer why we didn't do that. I don't want to put you up in the spot because I love you too much.
So only one part I can say is I cannot tell you how many times, between the election in November, until about three weeks into the Trump administration after he was sworn in, how many times people said to me, "Just calm down." It's not a time to be calm, you know? And I get your point on this. I genuinely do. This is not normal. This is not a time to be calm. We have to be in this fight. And it means in this fight all the way. I want to pick up, though, on one thing you made, Wally. And that is about getting the word out. You've got good ideas for how to market great... Great. You don't need me. The real point, this is the part I want to emphasize again, we need a movement all across this country. You are the source of power. And I'm glad to hear it. And if it works, I'm glad to repeat it. I get up and try to do this with my colleagues. I don't shake my finger at them. I actually just try to model the behavior. I try to talk about it and hope they'll talk about it the same way. Try to explain why it works. We need a thousand of you out there, Wally, here in Massachusetts and all across the country. Try different ways to say it. Get it up. Get enough people to list it and try it and try it on and see if it moves people. We are in a moment where we don't need one. We need many. We need many. Who's up next?
That would be me. I'm Jonas Naples, a student here at UMass Lowell.
I would like to say thank you for your staunch no vote on the recent GOP spending bill.
My question for you is a little bit of a doozy.
Okay.
Ten Democratic senators, led by Senate Majority Leader Chuck Schumer, yes, voted alongside a Republican majority to overcome the filibuster and pass that GOP bill.
Yep.
Schumer later, in an interview with the New York Times, said that he was hopeful that his Republican colleagues will resume working with us. That message is obviously not polling well, and it's not polling well with the public, with 57% of registered Democrat voters believing the party should be doing more to stop the Republican agenda. Do you believe that Chuck Schumer is the right man to run the Senate? Or would he be the guy who understands what's demanded?
So I made pretty clear what I thought was the right thing to do on that spending bill. And I didn't just do it at the last minute. I started in actually way ahead and started giving public speeches about it, going on television to talk about it, and twisting arms within our caucus. Obviously, Chuck Schumer and I did not agree. I think Chuck Schumer's wall. What we have to do now is get focused on this tax fight. I cannot describe to you how urgent this is. This is the ultimate struggle. It sounds obscure maybe to some people. What is it going to matter? It's going to matter whether or not Elon Musk and a handful of billionaires own this country, or we actually are still a nation that says we invest in public education for everyone, health care, housing, childcare, things in all of these areas. That is literally what's on the line in this upcoming fight. This is the fight worth having. And let me be as clear as I can about this. I need every single Democrat in this fight. Every Democrat in the Senate, every Democrat in the House, every Democrat in this country, and every independent, a damn big slice of the Republicans. That's the fight I am now focused on. And that's where I will stay. I will not let anybody get in my way on this. I will fight this fight. And I'm sorry to all of you. We have got to be these billionaires. So that's one thing. It's one more.
Senator, we have time for one more question.
One more? All right. All right, it's going to be a good one. Okay. The doozy thought he was going to get the last one here. Okay. We're ready.
All right.
623. 623. Where's 623? 623 is high now.
623.
We've got 623? Oh, we got it? Come on down. Huh? They're pointing at each other. This is going to be like when I was in Iowa and we did this. I do this so that everybody has an equal chance to ask a question instead of the most aggressive. And so they call some number, and nobody answered, nobody answered. And finally, this woman said, "Well, I have it, but I stuck my gum on it." Come on down. I was filling in for you. There we go. There we go. Go ahead. Okay. I'm Jenny Burnham. I live here in Lowell. Love it and love it. One of the concerns when you're talking about tell our stories, of course, we need to tell our stories. But you're not going to go with people who have no moral core. So we've got to do something else. I want the courts is one way to do it. And process, maybe, I don't know. So I hear your point, Jenny. We're not going to reach every one. But we've got to reach a majority. Because that's what it means to double down on the Constitution. We've got to get enough people on board. We've got to tell our story to enough people that we will back up the courts and say the Constitution still applies. Congress writes the laws. The administration administers those laws. And the courts hold them accountable to follow those laws. We've got to get more allies in this fight. We cannot start this fight by saying, "You are irredeemable, and I can't catch you in this fight." I think right now, we've got a lot of Democrats who are fired up and ready to go. That's part one. That's a good building force. We've got some on our air, for sure. We've got Democrats who are fired up. We've got some who are fired up adjacent, who could be, or fired up curies, right? They don't want to get too deep. They don't want to spend all their time talking about it. They want to be able to have the rest of their lives. But who are willing to get engaged. And we have a bunch of people who are decent people who just don't get what it means to make these cuts, who don't understand the threats to their own families, to their own neighbors, people who are good and decent people. We've got to pull in as many of those as we can. I like the way you actually started this, Jenny. I think you were exactly right. It is only a part of the strategy. Part of the strategy is the courts. And part of the strategy is writing this out in Congress over the taxing bill. So we're going to run a three-part play here. And I'm back to the original point. You don't run for office if you don't have some core optimism, some fundamental belief. Because you've got good ideas, and you go out and share them with a bunch of people, that you can actually move things in a better direction. The good Lord knows that I've been in fights that I've lost. But I've also been in fights that I've won. And if you're only going to get in fights that you know for sure in advance that you're going to win, then you are going to lose. And I do not pray to lose. So Lowell, Jenny, I know it's tough. I know that it's not entirely satisfactory. I know how many things that go wrong and how many people we care about are getting hurt every single day by the things that Musk and Trump and the spineless Republicans in Congress are doing. We are in this fight together. And I want you to understand this. I am honored to be here tonight to fight alongside you. Because I believe that together, we stay in this fight. We persist. I think we can pull this one off.